Finance Committee meeting, February 27, 2024. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Collins. Counselor Lozaro.
Present.
Counselor Lemon. Counselor Sang.
Present.
President of Bears.
Present, five present, none absent. The meeting is called to order. There will be a meeting in the Medford City Council Administration and Finance Committee on February 27, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chamber at Medford City Hall, 85 George B. Hassett Drive, Medford, Massachusetts, and via Zoom. The action and discussion items for tonight's meeting are, there's just one, Paper 22-494, Resolution to Draft a Budget Ordinance for the City of Medford, initially proposed September 2022. There were five committee meetings in 2023, in February, March, October, November, and December, and we are now meeting on it once more. I think we've ironed out pretty much all of the details. I'm going to quickly just share my screen. One moment. Yeah. Share my screen. This looks right. All right, so this is our agenda item, and you can see, if folks go to medfordma.civicclerk.com, you can find all of our meeting information here, our action and discussion item for tonight, all of the committee reports, a variety of documents attached. We're going to be looking at the latest version, which I'll just go through, which we sent to the administration. Administration did send back a response. But in general, this is, you know, adding to our Chapter Three Finance. It's not changing anything. You know, we're adding a purpose and intent of the article, but then not changing any of the existing provisions. It adds a new Article Five Annual Budget Process, and a new Article Six Budget Needs Assessments. You can see all the tracked language change here, but essentially, this would create quarterly financial reports and meetings where the City Council will meet with the Finance Director 60 days after the end of each quarter. On, and what would be discussed would be previous quarter accounts payable warrant by month for each month, the year-to-date budget to actuals report on audited, where available any updates on state certifications and revenue forecasts. And we would hold a committee or subcommittee to review the second and third quarter financial reports no later than 60 days after the end of the quarter, coordinating the date and time of the meeting with the Finance Director to attend. Then we get into the budget process. Essentially, we outlined this in a resolution last week for this process, but we would start with City Council Budget Recommendations, members of the City Council submitting individual recommendations for consideration by the full council by March 1st. So folks, get your recommendations in by Friday, which we discuss in a resolution. Then we would consider those recommendations as a council and submit them to the mayor by March 22nd. Let me jump back up here. We would start having, after that, some preliminary budget meetings between April 15th and May 15th with the mayor designee, Finance Director designee, relevant department heads. The mayor is providing an estimated budget allocation to the Medford Public Schools by March 1st as well. And we're working with the administration to schedule these meetings. The mayor Finance Director shall provide a schedule that contains the order in which they're discussed based on staff availability and administration priorities. Those meetings, we would also have information for those meetings, including the annual operating budget for the previous year, the department heads' budget requests for the upcoming year, and then a list of any new staff programs or services requested for the upcoming year. Following that, those meetings, so we'd have the recommendations of the council, preliminary budget meetings with department heads and the mayor and the Finance Director, and then the mayor would submit a comprehensive budget proposal by May 31st of each year. And after that, we could request, the council can request additional budget meetings to review specific proposed department budgets. The mayor, Budget Finance Director designees may also request additional meetings. And the comprehensive proposal would contain total expected amount of general fund revenue, including the expected property tax revenue, expected state aid, the expected local receipts, as well as the proposed annual operating budget for each department. And then, as we discussed previously, we, you know, including just simple top lines of, this is how much of the budget is paying for things we already did in the previous year, or, for example, how much of an increase is coming, is just paying for fixed cost growth, like union contracts, or the increase of the trash contract, et cetera, and then how much of any change is paying for new programs or new expenses? And that can let people see, very simply, that most of the time, even when budgets go up, in a nominal dollar term, it's really just paying for something that we were already paying for in the past because the cost of that has gone up year to year. And then there were two other items, which I know that the previous committee, the Ordinances and Rules Committee, has been pretty insistent on, and, you know, the administration has been insistent that it's not really, it's a capacity question to be able to do these. But there's two items. First is Section 3105, which is reviewing the progress to include additional funds in the comprehensive budget proposal. So we would like to see, if possible, and we've had, you know, folks can read the committee reports, I don't think we have to belabor everybody with the having this discussion for the third, fourth, fifth, or sixth time necessarily tonight, since it's already been had, and it is already written for the record. But the subcommittee previously, and we'll see if that is still where the committee is, really would like to see more of the city's total spending and revenue included in the budget process, including our enterprise fund, capital improvement plan, revolving funds, grant funds. And so, in lieu of including that, understanding that the capacity is not there in the Finance Office, there's a section here that would say that the request that, you know, have the, annually, no later than October 15th, the mayor, Finance Director, or designee submit a report to the council regarding the progress towards including those items in future comprehensive budget proposals, and then that'd be followed up by a meeting between a council meeting with the mayor, Finance Director, or designee to present that report and answer questions, and also consider updates to this ordinance if there are new procedures to be included. And there's also a similar item, you know, initially, this proposal had started with not just a scope of having a budget schedule established by ordinance, but also this idea of budget needs assessments, so really trying to determine what our medium and long-term operating and capital expense needs are, so that we can understand when we're spending money on a capital plan, or when we're saying, you know, trying to understand what it would take to provide an additional level of service or a higher level of service for a department, what is that going to cost? And, you know, through our discussions, it's clear that the resources and staffing levels in the Finance Department would need to be increased in order to accomplish that goal, and also that, in some aspects, we would be breaking new ground. That's, you know, some communities, most communities don't necessarily have the resources to put together reports of this nature as well. So, in a similar fashion, the latest draft from our December 2023 meeting just also includes that annually, same dates and times, the mayor, Finance Director, or designee can submit a report regarding progress towards creating these documents, and then we would have a meeting to discuss those reports if needed. And the administration also shared a response. And generally believe we're very close to being in agreement with the current draft. Main concern are those two sections regarding the annual reports. As stated in past meetings, we're not equipped to take this responsibility on presently, and recommend that the committee defer discussion on these items until after at least a year, so we can assess how things are going. Resource constraints are going to be tested, and not having capability for those sections is, you know, it's not there. And driving this point home, the capital improvement planning process takes over a year to complete, and so that's just another item to add in there. We hope the committee will be amenable to these exclusions. We're all trying to work together to better our processes, but attainable. The mayor and I do not want to set up our departments for failure, given our role in the organization. We believe we have the best understanding of their resource constraints. So that's kind of where things were left. I did send another message saying, at least my understanding of the prior committee, is that if the report simply says, "We still can't do it," then that would be something that, you know, we've had a lot of discussions on this. I think we understand the position of the administration that the resources, that this is a resource, this is a resource-intensive act, and the resources are not there. So that was just, but that was just my personal opinion as one counselor, so. But I just didn't want to put that out there. And so that's a summary, I think, in a few minutes of everything that's happened up until this point. I will go to members of the council, but since I did read some responses from the administration, I do want to let you chime in if I've mischaracterized anything before we move to discussion by the council. So recognize the Chief of Staff or the Finance Director at this time.
I'm happy to defer to the Finance Director if you'd like to start. I I don't have anything specific on my end at this time.
Thank you.
Push. Okay. Well, Nor do I. I think, I think you've adequately summarized what's been going on in our our general position on this, is that we, you know, we'd like to get the ball rolling, but, you know, we don't, we don't know how the ball rolling is going to actually pan out. So, you know, before we're, like, looking way forward to say, you know, we, these are, these are obvious things that we want to get in there. So the question really is, when we go to an October 15th report to the council, it may simply be, okay, we managed to do X, Y, and Z, but we're still not there to do, you know, move on to the next stage of that. That would be our concern, is how, you know, how rigid the council wants that documentation to be. Because obviously, once something is, once something is set in stone, it's set in stone in an ordinance, and we have to comply. So if the council is thinking that this is simply an update on progress towards these goals, then yeah, that's, that's understandable and doable. We want to keep everything, everything we vote on, that you vote, the council votes on, going forward to be something that everybody feels is achievable. So that's my main concern, given, you know, the people I've got to do it all. So that's where I am.
Thank you, Director Dickinson. All right. Discussion by the council, I saw Counselor Lozaro.
Thank you. Thank you for that summary. It was really helpful to hear everything laid out in that way. I was just, a question for the chair, if we, given the communication from the Chief of Staff, it sounds like because of the capital capital improvement planning process for this year, it sounds like maybe this is a one-year delay in that one portion. Would that be something that we could have an understanding that that would maybe be something that we could just set aside for the first year, and then we could approve everything going forward? Or on a yearly basis, we could sort of say, oh, there's one portion that we need to delay, and, you know, just an understanding that there may be various things that come up, but everything doesn't have to be. There's no penalty if something happens and we can't necessarily see everything as clear as day. It's not like we're doing taxes and, you know, you get audited and you have to, you know, pay a fee. It's, I think that, understanding that we're all working together on trying to get the most transparent process possible, and share all this information with the people of Medford, so that there are no, you know, it's not a surprise when we have the budget season upon us. That being the goal of everybody, then I wouldn't see any problem to, understanding that something, especially in the first few years, may take a little bit longer, or may have a couple of bumps in the road. I wouldn't see, I wouldn't anticipate that being an issue on my end.
Thank you, Counselor Lozaro. And to Director Dickinson's point, at this point, we've stripped out anything beyond just saying, "We'd like to see this." Let us know every fall how well we're doing, or how not, how far we've gotten, how not far we've gotten, depending on where we are. Counselor Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Bears. Thanks, as always, for being here and collaborating on this with us. Same to the Chief of Staff. Just to echo what my colleagues just shared, I think the, you know, I certainly share the concern. It's very important to not be legislating something that we don't know is within our capacity or beyond our capacity, and I definitely appreciate the focus on that as we're still crafting this in draft form. And I completely agree. To me, the intent of the language that's currently in that section of the ordinance is just to create kind of some sort of timestamp for a check-in. I know the term "report" usually connotated as like a very structured, very detailed, like it must have X, Y, and Z type of document. To me, the intent is just to make sure that once a year, we have some kind of record of, here's where we were last year, here's where we are this year, in terms of are we approaching it? What, what new tools have we developed? What is our sense right now of what we might need to get closer to that goal? And not some sort of mandate, not some sort of, you know, if it doesn't have this section, then it's invalid or something like that. A fairly, you know, the phrase I would use, I wouldn't put this in the ordinance, is I would be pretty comfortable with this being as formal or as informal as capacity allows it to be while we're trying to get this annual process off the ground. What's important to me is just knowing that we're going to have some kind of document and some kind of check-in in the fall every year that allows us to chart our progress towards the better information and the sophistication that I know the administration is already working towards, and that we're eager to support.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Counselor Sang.
I think to my fellow counselors' points, I think this is meant to be a lot more, I guess, more informative and less scary than it sounds. The, I, I believe that the council has already taken a step back when it comes to what exactly this report entails and the details that it has to entail. I think we're, we've become, over the last few months, much more open-minded as to what, you know, how, the broad definition of a report and what types of information we're seeing. And as President Bears said, the, the committee, at the very least, is, sounds, and as a counselor on this committee, I would be also amenable to the report, just saying, you know, the city does not have the resources to do this at this moment, you know? This is not a feasible option. And I wonder if there is a way to reduce maybe any hesitation or fear that the administration might have, yet and yet, meet a compromise on this topic along the lines of what Counselor Lozaro said about finding dates of effectiveness that work for the section, that work for the administration for the section, maybe delaying it a year, or putting in the words, you know, instead of saying just a report to council regarding progress towards and resources necessary to do X, Y, and Z, to do, to say a report to council regarding progress towards resources necessary for, and the feasibility of including X, Y, and Z. And I think that would be maybe slightly broader, and yet still get at the same spirit of what the council is looking for. And I know, as Director Dickinson, you said, you don't know what council we're going to be working with in five years or 10 years. Maybe that adjustment in wording will give you guys more leeway in terms of what you can do legally with the, with the ordinance like this in the future.
Thank you, Counselor Sang. Any further comment from members of the council? Any discussion from the Chief of Staff or the Finance Director? Madam Chief of Staff.
Thank you, and good evening. I don't think I said good evening when I first greeted the council, so, or the committee. So I think most of the things have been stated, you know, I, I appreciate the collaboration by the, this committee, the prior subcommittee, the council in general, on this subject. You know, I feel, I probably should reiterate some of the concerns I've expressed. They've already been stated, so I won't spend a lot of time. I continue to be concerned, and it was stated by Bob, and then acknowledged by Counselor Sang, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that this committee understands that some of the concerns that I've expressed, that we've expressed collectively at these meetings, come from a place of wanting to make sure that we're not putting future councils and future administrations in conflict with one another. You know, we, we recognize that this council or this committee may be agreeable, and presumably the council, hopefully, we would hope, would be agreeable to a very simple report. But I think there's been acknowledgement by this committee that, you know, we have resource constraints that are perhaps even more challenging than other communities. We are essentially discussing, discussing the, the codification of an ordinance that would create, you know, I realize that there's, I realize that there's nothing like, that would occur if something didn't happen, and I appreciate that sentiment very much. I do point out, though, that it becomes law. And once something becomes law, we are legally obligated to follow it, and we're going to do everything in our power to follow it. So, you know, we would never willingly or knowingly attempt to break the law, and that's what this becomes. It becomes law. We're not talking about something that's optional. We're talking about something we must abide by, we shall abide by. There may be no necessarily penalties, but that doesn't change how our administration operates when it, when it pertains to those kinds of things. So with that comes some, some uncertainty, right? We're going to present, hopefully, a good opportunity to collectively establish an understanding on how the budget needs to be laid out, by what timelines. You know, and as we establish other criteria, for instance, you know, one aspect of this budget ordinance, this law, will be that the city shall ensure that the city council receives the accounts payable warrant on a, I don't recall if it's, I think it's quarterly basis. We've been trying to keep up with doing it monthly recently, but I am behind a few months right now, and that is on me. So once this ordinance goes into place, I can't be behind. So I have to drop something else, and I must follow that. Something else that's not required by law has to be put aside, and I have to follow this. Now, at present, many of you, all of you, I'm sure, know that I'm presently supporting the Elections Office, so there's a lot of laws that need to be followed there, too. You know, I, I don't know what happens in a scenario where we have, you know, a lot of different laws we have to follow at the same time. We may have to figure out how to support the, the process to ensure that, you know, some, some other department or some other staff in the mayor's office, for instance, is dropping something that they're working on to support this. So, again, just not here to necessarily present a very large argument, but just to put everyone on notice, make sure everyone understands that, you know, what we're, what we're talking about is wanting very much to ensure that not only promises that we keep are kept, because that is obviously something we strive to do, and by agreeing to an ordinance like this, you know, we're essentially making a commitment, but it's also law. So those are, those are my comments, and I appreciate everyone's time and energy that's gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chief of Staff. Any further comments or discussion? See none? Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on Zoom? As we don't see anyone here in the chamber with us. Can raise your hand on Zoom. See none? Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Bears. I was just collecting my thoughts. I, I certainly appreciate, you know, everything that the Chief of Staff has shared in this meeting and other, and at others. The, I think the point is really well-taken, and I definitely appreciate the spirit of, you know, just being transparent about, you know, this. I know that these are things that we all want to do, and I really appreciate the clarity around, you know, I know experientially, what you want to do and commit to do and what you can do are not always a perfectly overlapping Venn diagram. And I think that, you know, as a city, we, we see how that plays out with our various challenges and episodes and things that we go through in trying to manage our capacity as a city overall. So I just want to note that that, that point is really well-taken. And, you know, this ordinance has changed a lot. One thing that, again, and I respect the diversity of opinion about the exact language that this section is put into, one thing that makes me personally feel comfortable is just how flexible the language of this section is. And of course, I've made it clear before, you know, that in my mind, this says, you know, shall submit a report, and doesn't really get prescriptive about what that has to look like beyond touching on certain topics. And it does bring to mind to me, because the Chief of Staff mentioned the Elections Department, in terms of, you know, I think this conversation is a lot about thinking through contingencies. What about the years when this report isn't like all that we would dream it to be? Quite recently, the city council asked for an Elections After Action Report from the Elections Department, and that report was not all that we dreamed it to be. So we talked about it, and, and that was how we took that document and got some meaning out of it by, you know, that's for a conversation about, you know, this is what we would like to see in it next time. These are the questions that we still have. The conversation that we had about the report, I think, answered a little bit more, some of those questions that weren't answered in the text of it. So I just bring that up as an example of why I feel comfortable with this language, knowing that, you know, I don't know, like, maybe we'll never have a season of going through this process laid out in the, laid out in the ordinance where it will feel very challenging to do that. Maybe it'll feel seamless, you know, starting this fall. Maybe it won't. But if it's not seamless, if there's friction there, if it's challenging to get a report together, if the report, like, has to be very concise, if the report has to be really bare bones the first year, if, you know, we read the report and we still have questions, well, I feel like we already have a model for how that can go. And I think that even just having a simple document to start out with, that's a jumping off point for a discussion in committee, or written follow-up, to me, that's still productive to have, even if that conversation is about what's not included. So I just offer that.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. And I just do want to note that the, the first main article regarding the budget would go into effect. We may need to make an amendment, because it says it becomes effective January 1, 2024, and it is obviously March, you know, or February 27, 2024. The second section regarding the, and it's still, this is just about a report at this point, it doesn't actually outline, this is just a progress report rather than a comprehensive analysis of budgetary needs. That would not go into effect until next January 2025. Counselor Sang.
Thank you, Counselor, President Bears. I, in the spirit of the work that we've been doing on this committee, I know there are two new members here, too, so I wanted to recap a little bit. But we first, when we first had a meeting on this, we had a draft that I think everyone in the room agreed was the model of what a budget assessment ordinance should look like, and, you know, there was contention over what was realistic and what was possible. And I believe this draft that we see in front of us today, you know, it's, it's the result of good faith negotiations from all parties on all, all of those points, and we haven't really thrown anything out of the window. We've just come to, worked point by point, and come to places of consensus and agreement on this. I think we've also operated with the assumption that the committee wants to see all these things in it, and is not ready to move forward with an ordinance without a lot of the components. And I think with that assumption, with that understanding of this draft ordinance, that's where a lot of that good faith negotiation came from. I just want to make sure that, you know, it seems from my read of what we're talking about, what we've been talking about over the last 20 minutes, it doesn't sound like the committee is ready to just toss out this section of the, of the ordinance. And I would, I know Counselor Lozaro, Counselor Collins, myself, we've all presented ways And I would, I I know Counsel Elizara, Counsel Collins, uh, myself, we've all um, presented ways for us to on this point, reach that point of consensus, that um, that shared understanding of um, how do we balance? Um, you know, the the administration's concerns and understandings of our um, our the feasibility of doing a lot of this stuff with the ideals and the moral, I I guess, the needs of our community to get this information transparently and for our council to get the information so we can make better um, financial decisions as a city. And I guess what I'm saying is, um, I would love if we can engage in that discourse with the with administration as to how can we make this section um, work better, you know? Let's let's not assume that we're throwing this out at the window. How, what what language changes can we make um, to get everyone on the same page here?
I would just posit that we we won't. And I don't think we're that far apart, but I I think I think, you know, the administration has made it clear they would prefer it not to be there and we my assertion, and I mean this in the in the kindest of ways, is that we've already thrown out the two sections. And now we're just saying, what would it take to get them back in? Um, that's just my my person, my, you know, just putting my cards on the table. You know, we've we've said, we we hear you, it's not feasible. All we want to do is every year check in on future feasibility. So, you know, if there's, that's just my two cents. If there's word changes that make people feel better, I have no problem with it, but um, you know, that's that's where I'm at. Um, I do have two things I wanted to add to the to the conversation. Um, which is, one, I actually think, you know, I was putting together the resolution to talk about the fiscal 25 budget, and I realized that I think sections, I think section what is currently City Council Budget Recommendations to the Mayor should come before preliminary budget meetings because it's chronologically an earlier step in the process. And I just think it might read easier if those two sections were swapped. Um, and I'm sorry, I was just reading through this one last time to catch any specific just technical things. Um, I think the only other one was the uh, just that we should change the effective date of Article 5. So that's it. But putting those on the table as well. Um, further discussion on Counselor Sang's point? Or any other technical amendments? Vice President Collins.
Um, the version of the document that I'm looking at is the track changes one. Would it be appropriate to make a motion to accept the track changes along with those other technical amendments around the effective date and swapping the order of those sections?
Yeah, so let me, I can go back to screen here. Do we have a um? This 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 looks like the document 1220, 2023. Does that seem right?
It was the one in the uh, packet.
In the bag, I think this is what I attached. Um, so you've motioned to accept all of the track changes in here. And then also to swap Sections 103, 102, and 3103. Okay. Uh, to just to swap the order of Sections 3102 and 3103. And then you also have the effective date. What do we want to, should we just say?
Would the um, Section 3154, I think that effective date is corrected by adopting the track changes, but Section 3108, um, motion to switch the effective date to January 1, 2025.
Or should we just do it for when the ordinance is passed?
Sure.
Yeah.
Shall become effective upon passage.
Because we're trying, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that sounds right. Uh, changing the to motion to that the article become effective on passage. At 3108. Okay, let's see what happens here. This is a momentous occasion, everyone. We're accepting all of the track changes. Second from Counselor Sang. I guess I shouldn't press the button until we've we've voted, right? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. See if my computer crashes. Didn't crash, and it cut like a whole page off of this thing. Um, all right, I'm going to move these two around. All right, all of that should be in here now. The Article 5 effective on passage, the next article not until 2025 swapped, and it looks good. Um, I think the last thing is just, uh, I know there were several proposals to it to add additional language regarding the annual progress reports. Any motions on that? All right, any further discussion? Man, Chief of Staff, Madam Chief of Staff.
I don't want to complicate this, but um, under budget and procurement, we might want to do a quick cleanup. We presently have a chief procurement officer and a budget manager. So just since we're already here, um, I don't know exactly what language, but we can certainly look at it. And um, if this committee is agreeable and that's just simply cleanup, I can certainly, we can certainly relay it to the council, the proposed language. Unless you'd like to do it here today, it doesn't, it's up to you all.
We want to, I mean, we've got, we want to try it now? I'm seeing some nods on, take a look at it now. All right. I love it. Let's see what Muni Code says. All right. One second here. All right.
I don't know how easy this is going to be in just looking at it right now, because it would seem to me that the chief procurement officer should, you know, have certain responsibilities, and then the other responsibility should fall into the Finance Director and not necessarily into the Budget Manager. Um, because we wouldn't necessarily expect that the Budget Manager would attend all City Council Budget Subcommittee meetings. That would be something that might be some, you know, would be something that we would that, you know, these, the the various sections that were just discussed have potentially alternative expectations versus this. So that I don't know how easy this is right now. We can certainly take a stab at it. Um, maybe stabbed not the right word. Take a take a bite at it. Um, but uh, I recognize it might not be that.
So just reading this. Uh, no, I appreciate that, Madam Chief of Staff. Just want to read, so we have the chief budget procurement officer, appointment term or authority. Um, this is pretty, you know, some of this looks like it's from the pre 1987 Charter era. So I don't even know how much of this is, you know, holds water under the current charter. Um, or exactly what the updates were. But yeah, I definitely agree with you. Some of these seem to be obviously procurement, and some of them are budget related, some of them are affected by the other sections. It looks like these Section 2 932 and 2933. Um, uh, those, I don't know, yeah, this is pretty technical, and it looks like it gets pretty deep into procurement law. Um, and I don't know if it is, you know, is, are we currently producing an annual report of the cost of all supplies furnished each department or officer? Is that something that's happening? Do you know, Bob?
Question.
All right. Any thought? So it seems like maybe we can't, can't do this right now. Counsel, Vice President.
If this is just a simple finding the right term for the position and swapping it in, I I personally would feel comfortable doing that from the floor, even if we refer this out to regular session tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, if you guys take a look through this and you have suggestions, um, we can, we can just add them, we can add the the modernization pieces on on the floor.
Yeah, and realistically, and if I may, I didn't mean to interrupt anyone, I realistically, depending upon the timeline of the council, you know, it may be something we have to circle back to, you know, if the council wants to move quickly on the ordinance, it's, it may be that we just aren't able to modify these sections right now.
Got it.
Just to put it out.
Yeah, and one of the things that we've been, you know, put out in the council governing agenda document is um, having just generally each committee review the ordinances that fall under their committees authority for just general upgrades and updating, because we found a lot of times, you know, going through, I know I did, I led snow and ice removal, Counselor Collins led on solid waste. There's just a lot of anachronistic language in the city ordinances that really needs to be updated. So we can wrap it up in that process at some point, too. Um, but if you, if you know, if the administration has proposals um, on this outside of us, you know, finding the time to just generally review ordinances, I don't think, I for one would not object to taking a look at them and trying to incorporate them.
Thank you. Appreciate that and appreciate just the opportunity to open this up today and take a quick look.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Um, so we have our amended document. Uh, are there any further motions, Vice President Collins?
Um, I would motion to report out of committee as amended.
On the motion of Counsel Collins to report this out of committee to the regular meeting. Second by Counsel Sang. When you're ready, Mr. Clerk. Which, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else anyone wants to do? Vice President Collins.
I'd just like to thank um, Director Dickinson and the Chief of Staff for meeting with us um, about this so many times, this term, previous term, um, and for working through it and coming out with something that we can get a start on, and I would motion to adjourn.
Thank you, yeah, and I would echo those comments as well. We have done a lot of good work, many meetings, lots of edits, and I will go to Counsel Sang.
Um, I would also like to echo those sentiments. I know um, Counselor Collins, President Bears, and I have sat through many of these um, meetings on this ordinance. I just can't um, you know, I I I can't over uh, overstate how important this is for Medford, um, how much time we spent on this. I think we've created a product that our city can be really proud of. Um, our residents can be very proud of as well. That really moves us um, forward as a team, all of us. Um, in our goals of reaching more transparency, making better decisions for our city, creating more reform. Um, I think this is the kind of positive spirit that um, so many residents have invested their faith in our government for, and I really want to thank you, um, Director Dickinson, our Chief of Staff, um, for working so hard with our committee on this.
And I've said. Great. Any further comment? On the motion to adjourn, Counsel Collins, second by Counsel Sang? Oh, second by Counsel, I can't, sorry. Just spoken up. Counselor Sang, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, meeting is adjourned.